Call me in order, please. Stand if you're able to start the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start the call order roll call, starting on my right. Counselperson Josh Sherman.
Counselperson Brendan Byer.
Attorney General John King. Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Johnson.
We're looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
We've got a pretty big one for you tonight. It's a good workout.
So let's move with that. So move. All right, we got a motion to approve. We have a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed? That'll take us to approval of council meeting minutes of the regular meeting of August twenty-second, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That also carries. We're looking for approval of budget workshop minutes of August twenty-second, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
I'll second that too.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Carries. That'll take us on to finance and budget. You have the accounts payable and the additional payable listed in front of you. Questions, please direct them to Finance Director Tyler.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the accounts payable. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. That takes us right into motions and general business. The first thing under motions and general business tonight is a conditional use permit. Conditional use permit for three oh two South Main Street, the used car sales. The planning commission now adhering on September sixth to consider the conditional use permit for section thirteen forty-five point zero four, sub G, used car sales. Advocates Oday and Ahmad were requesting approval of a CUP to start a business of selling used cars at three oh two South Main owned by Gary Johnson. Planning commission is recommending approval of the request subject to following conditions. Uh, and you want to read all the conditions?
You probably should, yes.
All right. Vehicle parking shall not hinder or block access or other uses of the property. No outside storage of new or used tires. Only minor repair work and no repair work using fluids. Hours of operation, seven AM to nine PM. Vehicle shall be parked ten foot from the right of way. At no point shall there be wrecked or an operable vehicle stored on the property. Approval of change of use in building for Homestead County due to change from a car wash to an office space. Current taxes to be paid in full at this time. There's a delinquent amount of five thousand nine hundred and twenty and four cents from 2022. And the first half of 23 is four thousand seven hundred and five and eighty cents. Another concern has been brought forward is that the parking lot is still gravel from the tank removal. And in 2019, when Mr. Johnson applied for a CUP for Midtown Auto, he stated that he was in the process of getting codes and would have it paid. The planning commission did not include this in their recommendations with conditions on September sixth. Another concern is that Ambassador Licker sign was removed per council direction. The invoice of three thousand seventeen dollars and thirty-three cents is past due. Mr. Johnson has indicated that he is contesting the cost, particularly the attorney's fee that were included, which is common practice to include with any invoices pertaining to an organ's compliance. So the council action requested tonight would be to approve the conditional use permit. Approve or deny the conditional use permit for used car sales as requested subject to conditions. Discussion. Questions? The advocates are here. If we have something to ask them, they're more than happy to answer a question, correct?
Nothing, nothing's really changed since you guys were at our last meeting, right? As far as your, your plans, everything's the same, right? And then it's pretty clear to me that if we put the condition of paving the lot, you guys are going to lose your opportunity to have a business because I know he's not going to do it. So therefore, I'm fine with not having that condition on there. I don't like it. I think it's a disservice to you guys and anybody renting there. And I don't mind being on the record to say that. But you heard me talk quite a bit about that at the planning and zoning meeting and I've thought about it greatly, but I, I would like to see you guys succeed in that, you know, so. And I'm fine as the, uh, the sign, I know there was talk about putting the, uh, having to pay it, pay the, the removal of the ambassador's sign ahead of time. I'm fine leaving that off and just requiring the back taxes in the first half of this year to be up to speed. We'll deal with that as a separate issue. It sounds like it's going to be anyhow, right?
It sounds like what?
Sounds like that's going to be a separate issue anyhow, that he's going to be fighting and contesting and I don't want to mess.
Well, as of, in the back cover, it will just count the property taxes.
Okay, fair, fair enough.
Anybody else have anything to add?
How many cars do you think you'll be able to fit in the space that you can lay down? Just out of curiosity.
How many is?
How many cars, yeah?
Twenty fifteen to twenty.
And the plan is to still not park on the back west side by the store if you leave that open, just like we talked about at the meeting, right?
All on the scenic side there.
Yeah.
Down the north.
What do you guys think? I think those are pretty fair conditions.
When I was on P and Z, I think these are among the same conditions we had the first time when he wanted to bring out the auto dealer in.
Yeah, they're the same conditions that have always been in place.
Yep.
There are hours of operations, seven to nine. It doesn't say anything about days. The state law, there are Sundays, but that trumps anything we do anyways, right?
Correct, right, yeah. Their license might be for a Sunday.
And fellas, I just want you to understand, we all want you to succeed. We all want to see you come to our town. And if we approve this conditional use permit, we still won't actually give it to you until the conditions are filled, which some you have to do when you start, but the taxes will have to be paid. We just want you to understand that. Bill?
Yep, uh, we're just researching right now, but it looks like on one of the parcels, the utilities, uh, utility billing hasn't been paid either, so. As the ADA has done with all their grants or approvals and we've already recommended to the council, any obligations to the city should be covered as well, so. That should be an easy one to take care of if it's just a month or two in years. Otherwise, that one too would get relegated to the taxes if it goes beyond the, like, three months.
Beyond three months?
If, um, what I just did today, he had one parcel that was, um, at, at least ninety days. I just don't know which parcel off the top of my head it was.
Fellas, we're, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to put that on as a condition. We'd like to be caught up in current. So everybody's not starting behind the ball right away. So that'll be enough. I, I haven't been approved. The rest of them gotta agree with me. But I, I'll put that on as a condition that the utilities are caught up to.
Because that would give you guys a fresh start for your operation. And you know you're free and clear on how to get started, so it's actually best to your best.
I would put that on as a condition. Anybody else got anything else to say?
What, what is the change in Houston? Well, is that? I know they have to change it from a car wash and office.
I just gotta make sure that, that Old City County approves that they're, they're able to do it.
Does that cost anything to the property owner or is like it just like?
Right, a permit for remodeling and stuff.
If, if he, if he, if they require any remodeling or anything brought up to date, then he would have to pull over and I have to.
I would say everything looks good from my viewpoint.
And it might be just because it's a change of use, they're, they're gonna, obviously a car wash didn't need bathrooms, that kind of stuff. So they're gonna make sure that there's access to inside bathrooms at some point. I think that gets there through a hallway, but is there, yeah, yeah, so just.
They just got to.
If there is anything compatible.
One of the parcels unfortunately is three oh two, so those dependencies are there.
We'll just get it all cleared up that way, guys. You're gonna start with a clean slate. But we can't let them start until the conditions are met. Just want you to understand that, so. I would, uh, move to put that on with the conditions and then I would move to grant the conditional use permit if all conditions are met. I'd make that motion. Anybody want to second it?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion further? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? You're almost there.
Thank you.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Now you can stay if you would like for the rest of the night or you could leave. We're, it's up to you guys.
Everybody that's smart leaves.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Good luck.
Bye.
Thank you.
Yep.
That'll take us to the 2024 budget. Proposed tax levy payable in 2024 and setting the truth of taxation meeting. City council will need to certify the preliminary levy to the county on or before September thirty, 2023. The levy that the council adopts can only be decreased in the final levy. There will be no increases. As a result of the council workshop, council directed staff to prepare the proposed certified levy based on the proposed preliminary 2024 budget of eleven million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. This amounts to proposed levy of four million, seven hundred thousand and one dollar. That is a six hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollar increase from the 2023 certified levy. Based on the tax capacity increasing, there is a twelve point zero nine three increase in city taxes. The levy is made up of the operating levy of four million, two hundred and one thousand, five hundred and forty-nine, the Stolling Pool referendum levy of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-four, and the Fire Hall referendum levy of one hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars. Then a truth and taxation meeting needs to be scheduled to present the proposed levy and budget to the public to receive their input. Staff has recommended that the TNT be set for Monday, December fourth at six PM with a continuation meeting if necessary at the regular council meeting on December twelfth. So we're gonna have two motions here. First one is to adopt resolution 2023 of resolution approving 2023. This. Would it be approved in 2023 proposed tax levy or would it be in 2024?
Yes, collect on 2024.
Tax levy collected on 2024. Discussion? Questions?
Yeah, all we're doing is setting it and we can, we can always work on that, right? We can still tweak it. So is this two separate motions or is it one?
One motion for both. No, we're gonna set a motion for the resolution and then we have to settle for the truth of taxation.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving 2023 proposed tax levy collected on 2024.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That will carry. Next motion needed would be to set the truth of taxation meeting for Monday, December fourth at six PM. And will that be here?
Yes.
Okay, that's city all.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed? That also carries. Takes us on to our next item, approval of assessment policy updates. At the eight twenty-two, twenty-three council week workshop meeting, council reviewed the proposed changes and cleanup of language of the assessment policy. The assess, this assessment policy was last revised on four twenty-seven, two thousand and ten. Notable changes are the assessment percentage changed to an eighty-twenty split with the city of property owners on the street assessments. Corner locks will be assessed using an average footage method. The footage will be averaged and equal to fifty percent of a lot of furniture. Utility service connection charges will be paid a hundred percent by the city. Council action requested would be to adopt the updated language of changes on city of circle assessment policy. Staff is all in agreement on the language changes that we should settle on.
Everything's all of you discussed and talked about at the workshop, so.
You guys remember all of them? Any questions or discussion?
And now go on for this year's project.
Yes.
Do we have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Opposed? That also carries. Ten Street Northwest, revised speed limit change. Now, there are ten weeks into the current thirty mile per hour speed limit change. Please see, there is two attached options for your considerations. Stay as is, thirty miles an hour from Highway sixty-three to Eleventh Avenue, Bear Cave Estates, and forty-five miles an hour to the bridge and the city limits. Or thirty miles an hour from Highway sixty-three to West Ava Cemetery where the curb veterans, and then forty-five to the point after Bear Cave Estates. And then fifty-five or whatever they feel like doing to the bridge, I guess.
So I thought this was slow when we first put it in, but I thought we were just following strict safety guidelines from traffic engineers. And that wasn't the case, so I drove it a couple times and again today. And it's slow and I understand why people are kind of firing up over it. I haven't heard what I consider to be a, a totally acceptable um, argument from people that are driving into town, other than they're annoyed that, that they're slowed down by about three minutes or whatever. It ends up being, I understand you figured that out.
Well, the one stretch is eleven seconds.
The one thing that I found out there though is that, and it was hard with the sunlight and I, you know, either way, but the amount of cars that come rolling up behind you because everybody's going faster than that is, uh, kind of a pain. Uh, so I'm clearly in favor of option two, where it'd be thirty miles until you get to the crest at the cemetery where the curbs pretty much stop, posted there, and then I'd say forty-five up past Eleventh and fifty-five shortly thereafter, and then it would just go right into the rest. However, I would want the caveat that we post a school zone twice a day that, that flashes and we'd have to get signage of some sort or do something where it would be slower when the kids are getting there and slower when they're leaving, when there's a lot of bus traffic and everything. That's just something that I think is, is a good add-on on that, but I won't put any. Yep.
Uh, my name is Dan Sova and Craig, I can agree with you. I live out in that direction. Um, I agree with option two here that he just talked about. The thirty mile an hour is, like you said, it's way too slow and nobody really will use it because it's too slow for the area. It's pretty rural out there. And just for comparisons, past high school, it's forty-five. And fifty-five just past high school, going down to thirty out here, it's forty past Grace Church and sixty just past, I think it's Eleventh Avenue out there, something like that.
No, I'm sorry, I'm trying to reach his drive, right at the crest of it.
Oh, right at the crest, okay, just before that. So I could use sixty before then.
They won't even let us go past the city streets.
So it's even faster before that. So out here, it's still pretty rural, even more rural than there. There's no sidewalks, there's no kids walking out there. I think forty-five that is. I think thirty to the cemetery, forty-five to the school, fifty-five beyond, or Alchioks.
One thing I'd like to add, I, I won't put any of it, but I would really myself like to see the thirty go to the first entrance of Bear Cave. Another hundred yards, which would probably mean about, I can run a hundred yards in eleven seconds.
I want to see it. Geez, why do we have to go there?
Driving another hundred yards at thirty miles an hour, if that's an inconvenience for people, I, I don't see it. And then I'd go with the forty-five and the fifty-five.
So let me ask this to be devil's advocate. What's the difference, if it's only a hundred yards, what's the difference?
Because we're getting awful loud, people starting to use the traffic. There is no sidewalks, they're walking just sides of the street going back and forth. Two brothers and stuff during our concerts and things like that.
I, I did talk to the Chamber of Commerce there. Everyone agreed to the crest for sure, just because it is blind either way. Um, but then I compared that if we went to the Bear Cave first driveway just because of the use of the park, Summer Fest and, and the athletic events out there. And then to go like everyone's kind of agreeing to the forty-five and the fifty-five.
And just to add one more of my own comments. Don't worry, man, we'll be posted. People aren't gonna drive a speed limit.
True.
So I mean, that's another reason, that's another reason, another reason that a hundred yards ain't gonna matter. Nobody's driving twenty miles an hour past the high school like it's posted there. I drive that every day. I make sure I drive twenty just to hold everybody off.
Well, we could do it through the legislative legislature and just legalize everything and just say, you speed, drive as fast as you want.
I, don't go there. I got, I got an email. Says the same thing. There's no reason that we should be able, I had a rural citizen send me an email that there's no reason that the man, me, should be able to set a speed limit. They should be able to drive any speed they want, anywhere they want, as long as they don't run over something.
But there's no statement, but they know their system.
No, that's what they told me, but I am. That's what I would like to see, but it's a, the body of fire, it's on. I would like to see that thirty go to there, then the forty-five and the fifty-five. And it's.
Well, I already said my preferences to have it start at the top of that crest, but I, I do think there's some legitimacy in what you're saying there of people that may walk.
You talking about first turn by the first disc area?
Yeah. Just that one.
Yeah, either way, cemetery and the first disc, I guess.
They're not gonna pay attention to either one. You know that, well.
Yeah, I drive it every day, every morning, later. But thirty is too slow beyond that. It's, it's hard to avoid the vague. It's too slow compared to the else around here.
I didn't say that.
Four is doing that. Forty miles an hour to residential. It, it's too fast for the area.
Well, I need to tell the rural folks that if, and it just happened to fall through on, so if there were developers that were gonna start development, it would have stayed thirty.
Sometimes a huge return to residential, you'd be fine, but at this point, it's, it's wrong. I mean, I, I don't know, for twenty years. Especially past the high, or past Bear Cave, which is not an option. Maybe in ten years, it'll be built on there and we, we love it so much, it'd be fun.
But that's my thoughts. Jeremiah, your thoughts? Um, I know there's one more smart ass remark from me. I also got a couple texts and people are scared to drive in the dark out there because someone might jump in their car when they're going thirty miles an hour.
Oh my god.
Well, that's, that's anywhere.
That's right. That's Main Street Rochester, so they'd be more afraid to drive down that one.
I got deer on the way around.
Oh, no. No, they're afraid of something jumping in with them, not just hit the deer.
Because they're going too slow?
Yeah, it's so slow that somebody could jump in with them.
Every time I think I'm the dumbest person in the world, there's a new.
You've been to enough meetings. Jeremiah?
Um, so I'm okay with extending the thirty out to an option two out to the first, first, uh, Bear Cave sign. Um, and, and going with the rest of it. I, I just, just so that we're slowing traffic down, um, in, you know, coming into town. And when, when this came up before, the one, that was the one thing that I was concerned about was the, you know, complaints that I was getting from traffic coming in too fast from out of town. Um, so as long as that's still, we're still accomplishing that, I'm good.
Josh?
Yeah, I like option two and I'm fine if we do it up to that first Bear Cave entrance. Cause I think in the summer, I know it's busy with the, with the park stuff. Um, but even in the fall, like on Saturdays when I'm up there coaching my sons with, like, football, like, there's people leaving. And we, we get there eight o'clock in the morning and they have games there until afternoon. So I think anything we can do to slow people down going through it, very most times.
Well, they, it used to be fifty-five, but it's. Yeah, forty-five, I think. Most people are happy with that. And acceptable, and we'll drive it, I would assume. But when you go down to thirty, everybody's gonna blow through because it's, I don't think, realistic at this point, don't they?
Justin, let me ask you approximately, how many tickets were handed out since it's been this way?
Uh, I know, just one.
They've just been educating people rather than.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna.
That's what I was gonna say. If we change it, then no more education.
I'll shoot out an email right away just that it's changing in general and that.
Well, we gotta let them have a chance to get used to it again. In their ten weeks, they should figure it out, but if they don't, we're gonna start waiting.
So when, when we had the speed trailer out there, it did slow people down. It, it did, because we could see, I can see it all speeds. Um, I mean, it brought people from that fifty-ish down to thirty-five, thirty-six-ish. But now it's a bit of a back to.
We might get a ticket.
Right, right.
Forty-five past the school for me is, is, I think, realistic. I mean, it's forty-five past high school. Forty past Grace Church. Why, it's the slow section out there for no reason.
Two twenty mile an hour ones?
I don't know, I mean, we're needing some discussion on that, so you know, I just wanted to suggest that.
We're gonna get some car on it.
Oh, yeah.
It's coming into the morning.
So. So then, whatever our options are. Isn't that something that can be added anytime too?
Well, I think we could, right? We would just be, we just have to come up with whatever.
Just put your way across it or something like that.
Well, we just wanna make sure everybody doesn't get upset if we try and do some public safety out there. That's my concern. All right, go ahead and say it. Let's have a vote. Pick one.
I'll make an option to approve number two with the mayor's suggestion to go to thirty to the, get to Barricade entrance.
And we can actually, we can just look into schools once later on if you want, right?
Sure. We'll look at the school zones.
And we'll look into school zone lights and speed in it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We got a second. Any other discussion? Bill?
Obviously, in twenty twenty-five, we've got eleven planned to the improvement, and that'll probably become more of a full-fledged intersection, so we can review it again and see how it's all working out, and that might be an appropriate time for that school thing to work out too, so.
All right. We have motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. How soon we can start to sign each regular?
I think we can just jack these signs around.
Yeah, I mean.
So I think we should be fine. I'll call located for post.
Okay.
If, if we have to switch posts, I'll look at it. If we have to switch posts, I'll call located, so it'll be next week something.
Okay, all right.
Are you wanting to start with an education? Or are you guys ready for it?
No, we just, we gotta give them a break. I'm not opposed to give them a break.
And I don't think forty-five, I don't think that you'll have crazy, because you're not gonna have sixty mile an hour. Yeah, I haven't seen a sixty since.
Well, I had one guy ask me that one day. He shot down into the parking lot, and I don't know how fast he was going to get around, and come shooting out the other end over here.
That was the handed legalized cannabis, and he was getting the cough. We saw it one day too. A couple of us, a guy shot into the, and then raced really fast to the ground, and then shot off the other end.
Yep.
He was trying to skip through there without having to hit the road.
Yep, he didn't wanna have to go thirty, figuring he'd go a hundred to the parking lot. All right. No, Justin, we'll do some education first.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Beautiful, can't we?
Huh?
Did we vote already? I don't, or do we? I think we have a motion in a second.
You need to conflict vote those.
Oh, we don't. I think we put it in. We ended and stayed away. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Home State County agreement. Home State County request. Regional Public Safety Training Contract. Attached, please find a new contract for utilization of the Regional Public Safety Training Center. The contract is zero dollars. While Sturford Fire Department is expected to reimburse the county for any consumables it uses during training. The contract will ensure liability coverage for the time spent at the facility. Council actually requested us to approve the contract of the Regional Public Safety Training Center. Who do you approve? Bet the chief approves of that, don't you? We got a motion to approve, we got a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that one carries. Home State County Agreement, Warning Sirens. Home State County has submitted a joint powers agreement for the outdoor warning sirens. The agreement lays out the responsibility of Home State County Homeland Security Emergency Management to formally provide warning services. City currently has five sirens, ones at Second Street Southeast and Second Avenue Southeast, Fourth Street Southeast and Borough Boulevard, Twentieth Street Northwest and Cardinal Lane, Barricade Park, Meadow Park. Approved entry into the joint powers agreement between Home State County and the City of Sturford. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have questions or discussion about this? Bill, you're the chief, both are safety people.
Yep, um, basically, it just puts in paper what's been the common practice. Counties always help us with all the maintenance, they do all the testing. If there ever is a new siren needed for a new subdivision or, or city expansion, the city covers the new cost upfront, then they take over the maintenance of it, so it works out pretty well.
Good, all right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Ordinance revision, floodplain ordinance, panel mapping. The floodplain ordinance regulates, guides development in a manner that complies with the state laws and the standards of the National Flood Insurance Program, and it will reference the effective flood insurance rate maps and flood insurance studies. After the new study of maps were completed, the city needs to revise our ordinance to reflect the new mapping panel for our community. That is number two seven zero three three two, panel number two zero nine five. A public hearing was held on September sixth, June twenty-three, with the planning permission recommending approval of the revision.
Yeah, we had thirty-five people come to that that were worried about the number change.
If you did approve, I'm correct, all right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Jeremiah?
Second.
Great. Motion in a second. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. See, there was no opposition from anyone here either. All right, that takes us out of the regular business into mayor's staff consult reports. Mayor's report tonight. Kind of a short one. Sue would like to send her sympathies to the family of Dick Walks, Craig Nelson, Sharon Green, Michael Plots. It's gonna be a busy weekend again in Sturford. Last weekend was busy, this one's gonna be busy too. Stars, Sturford Stars Trash and Treasure Days is Friday and Saturday. Morning Lions are holding their Fall Festival this Saturday. The Kiwanis will be holding their Peanut Days this Friday and Saturday. Like to send a somewhat belated happy anniversary out to Bill and Stacy Schimmel. They had the couples been married.
Three seven, three seven.
Three seven.
And the mayor and Mrs. King.
Forty-seven.
We can't say that, but it's happening. Married for forty-seven.
Can you, I mean, she's a saint, how could you? And I like her a lot, but I can't imagine being married to her for forty-seven.
Um, that is great. I always dreamed of being married to you. That's all I have. City administrator's report?
Uh, sure, report it, you can pack it, but if you notice that signage, uh, attachment, um, we're right now gonna go with the, the same signage that the county's going with for prohibiting the cannabis in our parks and public places. Just makes it more consistent. And then Cheryl and I will be working with the county on how this eventual language should look, uh, ordinance wise too. Right now, the thought is we concur with their language unless there's some customized tweaks for the city.
So it'll be the normal, everything.
Right. And so that's what it will look like as we go signs in place.
We'll just change it to city.
Those will go on all the driving entrances to farms.
We'll change it to city.
When we have to, or, or according to the county attorney, we're gonna label everything, it's not gonna work.
I will order them next week. I was waiting till five.
Do you get some smaller signs for the amphitheater?
Some what signs?
Signs put by the amphitheater?
No. For what? Oh, for the.
Smoking, vaping.
All we gotta do is post it in the tantrums.
Cover up.
If there's a problem, we'll talk to them and, yeah, it was one incident this year.
If they do it, they know they're not supposed to be, except the entrance coming in.
Right.
And it's an enforcement issue.
Well, they know why they're not supposed to be.
So I noticed you mentioned the CIP projects, Bill, and they're doing their, starting the park, the punch cards or punch sheets or whatever.
Punch sheets, they call it.
So I was just kinda going through there, and I thought it, everything looked good, but it seemed like a lot more yards that are completely dirt than on other projects that I've seen. Is that because of how much leveling out we need? Yeah. Because we didn't, people get upset if you have a yard that comes down like this, like the old yard used to, and then it does this.
Yeah, right.
They wanna taper more even out. Some people look like, there were a couple retaining walls I saw, so did they have a choice of what they wanted to do? Or was it just a matter of what the company was able to do?
They did engineer.
Yeah, she, she built the, the retaining wall in the areas, did. We did have some areas now that were overlooked, uh, so it, elevations were a little higher, I think, than what they thought they were gonna be, so we ended up having to put a B, what they call a B curb in. On the backside of the sidewalk, they're putting an elevated, however high they need to, it'll just be concrete at backside, like by some of the trees, because neighbors didn't wanna lose their trees.
Sure.
So they're on private property, we cannot force them to take it, but we can do what we have to in the right way.
So, do we go back as the company then exceed their yard, or is it up to them to redo like?
No, we'll zon it back that far.
We're gonna be back.
Little extra cost coming back there, but, I mean, I wouldn't be able to if I had a front yard.
No, I'm glad we're covered. Yeah, no, I think it's great. I just figured it'd be, given it's a lot of the work with the yard, the owners would love to go back in farther so they could.
Oh, good.
Each yard is customized to fit that.
Well, it's pretty neat to see, because you can see the different elevation, but it's.
The vast majority of the property owners have liked that approach, even though it might be cutting up into the yard a little bit more, but it smoothes that out nice, so.
Any other questions for your administrator?
Um, you got anything else, Bill?
Uh, just highlight good news. If you look right below that, the report lists with the EDA and the interest out in, um, uh, North Business Park, uh, getting ready for a closing on one lot sale. Uh, the EDA is working on a second one, and, um, then, um, what's your, oh, and then Minnesota Medical, uh, the new addition. And so we sent a note to you, you're invited to ribbon cutting there, groundbreaking, so, uh, they're expanding on their, uh, really good news that Sturville continues to grow, so.
All right, thanks, Bill. I'll take us on to finance director, Carla.
I met with the BioRelief last night. Uh, Bill and I went down and met with them, and we did our annual review of their investments and kind of, because the city can help contribute to theirs, and then, um, kinda went through all of that, and everybody knows as the market has gone up and down in, throughout the last year. Um, but they are still sitting okay, um, with what they're, what they've got there and what's going forward, and there's been, there's not gonna be any changes this year. Uh, the past couple of years, we have all that retirement, and we won't be doing any changes on that this year. We're leaving that uh, the same as what it was. Working, uh, now, we'll, we'll work on trying to see what we wanna do for the final budget, um, for twenty twenty-four, as well as, as the two CIP projects are getting, uh, wrapped up, we will get the assessment hearings set. I was, Jenna was not available today, but I'm gonna need to get with her just to kinda get an idea. We'll get those files, Excel files updated as well, um, with the new, um, assessment policy and so what that'll mean for homeowners too.
Any questions for finance director? Anything you'd like to ask her?
No.
Thank you, Carla. Uh, public works director, Sean?
Yeah, thank you for that.
Have a good night.
See you later.
Uh, since Jenna's not here, I'll give a little rundown of all the street projects. Wastewater Plant, to start with, is wrapped up. Everything is done there except the landscaping work, which they buy another company to come in and finish that. So, they were, Joseph Companies was a good company to work with. They did a good job, uh, good to communicate with and everything else, and I thought that went fairly well. Uh, the CIP North on Fifth Avenue, uh, they were supposed to be here today with three crews to start finishing the black dirt work, uh, finish grading and stuff like that with sod coming in. Originally sod is supposed to be this weekend, there's no way that's not at least next week. Uh, there is some concrete areas, right, Justin?
There is.
Justin's one of the unfortunate ones that there's adjustments that need to be made in his, so some concrete's gonna come back out. Needs to be repaired, some more of these V curbs on this side also, uh, will need to be placed on the sidewalks. So a concrete company's gotta come back in, and they can't do a lot of the finish work in the backside in those areas until that is done. So, it's, it depends on when the concrete guys can get back here and do. Uh, the CIP South, kinda the same situation there. They were supposed to be here probably tomorrow, I think, is what said, you know, that says they tell you one thing, and sometimes it's not lived up to on that end, but, uh, they're gonna finish, they're done with all the dirt work down there, other than the areas that they have the V curb that they gotta wait for. So they will wait and place sod and everything at the end, so they're waiting on the concrete there also. Uh, the V, or the amphitheater bathrooms, uh, the floor is bored out there now. Uh, he thought he's gonna be here tomorrow to start blocking it. So, it's moving. Other than that, same old, we're in public works maintenance stuff.
I finally drove by the skate park too. I like that. It turned out pretty good.
Yeah, we got that, uh.
Their Red Vest days are, are set up for the middle of October for the skate park, and we've been working on different things with that too, and the reporting and all sorts of.
No, it says there are October sixteenth. Now, do they bring all the people in, or do we gotta supply people?
No, they're bringing volunteers. Uh, they're coming the first week in October to place all the equipment, and we push the Red Vest days back beyond that, because there's no point in getting all this done, and then they gotta drive over everything, all the equipment out there. So, we're gonna let them get the equipment out there, and then the Red Vest days right after that, and that'll be a lot of the landscaping, finishing up stuff there. Uh, they do wanna do a little more concrete work that they have the money for, that we can't get anybody in till after that point anyway this time, so that's not gonna be no after other equipment stuff to say. So.
Great. Great. Any other questions for Sean? So you kinda covered Jenna's part too, then?
Yep.
I like that. You guys are gonna look good. Here I do, Sean. You guys kept it, the watering guys, the part-time watering guys that watered plants, they kept the plants looking good all summer. Been a tough summer to keep stuff looking good, but it looks good. Thank you.
It's not aggressive, it looks good.
I'll tell you what, you, you kept everything, you guys kept everything pretty much. You can't help when it was dormant, but I mean, you made it look good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Library director's report. No library director, so we're gonna go right to the fire chief's report today. Chief?
Uh, just like you said, I'll say, thanks for approving the, uh, contract with the county for the regional training center. It's a huge benefit for our department. We do a lot of stuff out there, spring through fall, so thank you for that. Um, slowed down a little bit. We had fifty calls for service, thirty-seven EMS, and thirteen fire-related calls. Um, that's, I haven't had as much going on, I guess, uh, as we have months previous, but going into next month, before I'll be at the next meeting, uh, our breakfast is moved ahead a week this year, because, uh, Legion was booked, the weekend we normally do it, so Sunday, October first, we'll be our, uh, pancake breakfast in our open house, um, October eleventh, that's a Wednesday, so that'll be being advertised here coming out too, so.
Is it getting all dued up for combine fires this fall?
Really?
Yeah, so we've updated with engine three going into service, all of our order, which we pull up for different emergencies, we have that all updated, and that's all posted, and the SOGs all changed too, so that's all updated for, you know.
Are we still under a burning ban, you know?
No, the county lifted the, the burning ban that was countywide, even though it's still dry out. The weather conditions changed quite a bit to help us out, so, uh, yeah, that, that came about through the city Rochester, the chief Rochester put a ban on the city Rochester, and then Home State County chiefs were having conversations via email, and we just asked the sheriff's office to make it countywide, did basically to help us out with getting the word out and forcing it. Uh, when it was over the holiday weekend there, it was hot, windy, and of course, dry, as it hasn't been all summer, but no, that's been lifted, so recreational fires, things like that are allowed again, that's just back to whatever DNR, restrictions there are, so we will go by it.
Nice you guys said put the flag down yesterday too. I appreciate that.
Yeah, a lot of, yeah, I, I, I like seeing that up there too, um, um, September eleventh, and we've been a lot of positive feedback from it too, I think it's just a nice little touch as people drive through our town, so.
All right, any questions or comments from chief? Thank you. That'll take us to, oh. Takes the weight on it. Jake, the pool director's report.
You didn't save money on chlorine this year. You got your numbers. Uh, the big one was open swim attendance. Almost ten thousand more people, um, again, one of the area pools around us was closed for the summer, so that added to it. We were kind of the last pool standing for the last two weeks. There was a really hot week, and then Labor Day, we know was really hot. Um, we were fortunate to have staff to stay open. I think, I was talking to Carla, I think we closed one day. I mean, that adds up, so that's your. Oh, yeah, maybe next year, if it never fell again.
Yeah, you just set yourself up.
Yeah, I know, I shouldn't compare, so, but it was busy. It was, it overall went really, really well.
No bigger mechanical functions or nothing, or no big problems, so?
No, so, cross our fingers for when we start it up next year.
That one heater.
Oh, that's right, the heater.
There is one heater that, the, the one that we put in new last year, uh, it was even two years ago, and we had trouble with it last year. They repaired it this summer, they would look at it again in a year to make sure. It is failing again. We pulled the other old heater, that one still looks in good shape. So we are assuming it is a malfunction in that one heater, and we are gonna try and get that covered by warranty, since it's limited to one. And that, well.
I believe it's hot, I'll probably get a heater. Just those three days.
Any other questions? Bill's got a question.
On behalf of the staff, they sent out treats to all of you from the concession stand. It's the infamous Slappy Taffies. Be sure to enjoy, uh, as you go home.
Bills aren't good on them anymore.
Thanks, Jake. You and the staff did a bang-up job. You guys, you handled a lot of people down there. I don't know how you do it. All right, that'll take us on to committee commission and board reports. Chamber of Commerce. EDA, HRA, we have a meeting next week. Finance. Library.
I don't know.
Park board.
Got a meeting last night, but we didn't have a forum, so nothing.
Personnel?
Minutes are in there, and we, we're already hired. Everything's still moving forward with that. He hasn't started yet, has he?
Yeah, he's been here for three weeks now.
Oh, I thought for some reason he said three weeks, so not two.
He did.
He signed his third week? Oh, right, so two and a half.
Oh, much faster than I thought. I thought we were.
But he started before. His employer said he could go early if he wanted to, so he said, do you care if I start a week early? So we started a week earlier.
All right, good. Worked out good.
Somewhere.
Finance morning?
Uh, we dealt with their issues tonight, and the meeting minutes are in there. Public safety?
Nothing awesome going on. Got the random influx of homeless population that's moving down, for some reason that deputies are handling accordingly.
And one guy's drifting around from Quick Trip and all over, right?
He's trying to make his way to Iowa.
Yeah. Who's, who's the, uh, the recurring call at Florence Park? Somebody?
She's gone.
Did she finally? Because she wouldn't accept any help from you guys, would she?
No, she's been gone for a week.
Okay.
She coming back, and I'll deal with it.
How about the guy in the LTD?
He's also gone.
Is he?
He's an A-one trucker. I've got him. Yeah, we got that worked out.
Did you get the other guy to Iowa the other day?
No, he won't, he won't accept help.
No, that guy sitting in front of Quick Trip drinking a beer?
Yeah, oh, no, he's still here. We dealt with him twice today.
Well, next Monday, I'll go to Crested South Market, throw him a stop trailer. I'll give him a ride to Iowa.
He just won't accept anything. There's nothing we can do when they don't accept help. Um, the, with school starting, now there's gonna be a bunch more stop arm violations that I'm dealing with. Bet two today, uh, so, that'll just keep me busy for a while.
Do our buses, don't you have cameras?
Really good cameras.
Yeah, but that's, that's like a, that's a great thing, but it's a pain. It's a huge pain, because we had to figure out a whole new way to even attack those at Rochester PD, because it was, there's too many of them, man, and then you can actually follow up on some, and also. There's too many.
They do have really good cameras. I think it's state-funded for this whole project, so they have to like report a bunch of things to them. So, it's kinda cool that they're doing it, but yeah, it's a lot of work.
Well, thank you. You did a bang-up job, you and the guys are, thanks a lot. You're doing great. So I, we don't wanna need to keep him around, because we'll probably take care of his driveway, so.
They're trying to keep me out of my driveway. I'm in town, I mean, what?
Seven more days, we can't get in there.
Thanks a lot. Public Works? Ready?
On our report.
Roll call.
Minutes in your packet. They got the open house coming up on some future planning.
Transit Advisory Committee.
Meeting next week. I'll keep you updated.
We, we thought about getting the budget workshop. We put you in the budget, didn't we, Carla?
Yes, get it.
Communications, nothing in packet. Anybody wanna use the open mic tonight? Guess not.
The mic and motion to adjourn.
It's my open mic. We got a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries.